Well, good morning. First of all, I want to start by announcing that we do have a joint statement from the executive and myself as president of the council congratulating Mike Miller for putting forth the marker to begin the conversation, a serious conversation in, we hope, in terms of transportation funding for the state. We are very excited about this. We do maintain that it is important for the state to take up this obligation. There should be a state solution. We are a bit concerned about some of the conversation in terms of the amount of money that is perhaps being discussed. The 3% sales tax on gasoline does not generate enough revenue, and so we hope that all options are explored. And I think the majority of the council has already had, you know, conversations in the past in terms of recognizing how critical it is for us to move forward with some type of solution. All options should be on the table, whether it's a 3% increase on the gasoline tax. 6% is what we think should probably be the ultimate goal, phase it in. Obviously, we do understand and recognize that we're still facing some difficult economic times, but we believe that phasing it in would be appropriate. Of course, we're always mindful of those among us who are affected by poverty, and we hope that there are some mechanisms to lessen the impact. And obviously, these are things that our delegation in Annapolis need to grapple with. There's also some support, and it's not unanimous on the council, but some support on a one-cent increase on the sales tax to just also complement that amount of money. So it's very early. Obviously, we have not seen a bill. We don't know exactly when it will take place. Our executive and myself will be spending some time in Annapolis, monitoring what's going on, and also expressing our desire. But for us, obviously, our priorities continue to be, as you know, the Purple Line, CCT, as well as some funding for infrastructure for the future of the rapid transit vehicle. So for us, it's about transit, and it's important to remember that transit for Montgomery County is very much tied to all the different master plans that we have adopted and that we hope to adopt this year. And this, as we all know, the facts are what they are. We continue to be the economic engine of the state. So whatever investment we make in transit, it is directly tied to our efforts to increase revenues vis-à-vis economic development, and that will then have an amazing impact, positive impact in the state. So it's all connected, and that's why we feel that it's critical that this move forward in this particular session. So stay tuned. Also tied to this issue of transit, last week, the council, eight to one, did adopt a $500,000, did recommend for a $500,000 appropriation for preliminary planning and studies for bus rapid transit or RTV. And the request was of a million dollars, but the council, as we looked very carefully at the analysis, felt that at this particular point in time, it was best to just go with a $500,000 to begin the planning studies as well. The planning board is currently working on the functional master plan amendment, and this will identify the routes more closely in the stations. And we believe that we should be getting this around summer or fall. And so it was our belief that we should wait until that happens and then see what will be the additional funding that is required to explore and continue to plan for the more specific routes. This is a big step for Montgomery County. Obviously, this is sending a very clear signal that we are moving ahead with looking at every possible solution for our transportation challenges. And again, this is why it's so critical that the state help us in this regard. The other issues that I wanted to bring up, tomorrow, we were not, we had to cancel our update on weakened redevelopment status. Department of General Services needs a little bit more time to work through some particular issues. The memorandum of understanding between Park and Planning and the county has been adopted. This was last Thursday. There are some, I think, positive developments in the sense that Department of General Services is exploring perhaps a private partnership in one of the lots that we are looking at, which is identified as Lot 13. So they need to look at that a little closer. That's why they needed a little bit more time. And also Park and Planning will then be, is looking at a site where the Regional Services Center is right now. This will allow them to be, they're independent. It doesn't really change the scope of this revitalization proposal. It just changes a few of the pieces. So they just need a little bit more time, and we are scheduling the briefing in February to ensure that we have all the different details. Very exciting. Spending affordability guidelines, we start this afternoon in the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee. This will be for this year's capital budget, and this is the beginning of our budget process. We are very mindful that although things are getting better, the economy is picking up somewhat, we need to be very careful when we look at our debt service. And it is my hope that we will continue to remain within our $295 million spending affordability guideline. And there may be some tweaks, but it is my understanding and my hope that we will stay there because it is critical to not get too excited yet about how things are progressing. The other issue that is of importance is that in the Glenmont area, as you know, right now, there is a work, Park and Planning is working on the Glenmont Sector Plan. They're very busy, and it's going very well. I had requested that the delegation from District 19 explore the possibility of introducing a bill in Annapolis destined a Glenmont and enterprise zone. And they actually did that, and Senator Mano and Delegate Kramer took the lead in this, which was really exciting. And it's great. Right now, my understanding is that the, already passed the House delegation, so this is good news for Glenmont. And obviously, this is just the first step. Next, we need to apply to the Department of Business and Economic Development at the state level to create the full-fledged enterprise zone. But I think this moves us a step closer to realizing much-needed redevelopment and revitalization in Glenmont. And I think those were my main broad issues, and I will just open it for any questions that you may have on any other topics.
What is your take on the ICC and the rates that people are? I mean, I heard Bill Andrews died on, you know, maybe lowering it so that residents are able to use it if they can't afford that. What's your take on that?
You know, I have not personally received much correspondence about that. As council president, we really have not gotten a lot of requests for such a thing. Obviously, this would be, you know, a state issue. But there are some preliminary data that point to the fact that, you know, the usage is not at the level that people expected. And I think it would be good for folks to take a look and see if they can do anything to increase that.
Do you think that that would be something you'd be interested in figuring out or not because they're way far, you specifically?
You mean for the council to take up?
Yeah. I mean, do you think the council would take this up at all?
Take a position on it?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe. I haven't really thought about it. It's not something that's come up to us yet, you know, so, obviously, because it's not something that we have jurisdiction over.
Have you gotten much, much feedback, correspondence on this?
So my office has been contacted. There have been some neighborhoods that have had some issues with that. We actually have visited homes to hear the noise, and we have been, you know, very much in contact with Departments of Transportation and, you know, State Highway as well to see what we can work out. They have promised that they would come in and evaluate and see what kind of remedies can be put in place, but it has been something that has been brought up before.
What kind of remedies would there be?
You know, they haven't shared that with me yet, so whether it's reinforcing the noise walls, finding ways to do that, it's been, it's been interesting because, not sure why, there are certain areas that are more affected than others. There are some neighborhoods that seem to be closer, and they're not hearing, you know, the buzz, it's like a sort of background noise as much. But they have said that they're going to look into it and see what type of reinforcements they can put in. Totally agree with you.
This isn't with transportation at all, but I have another question I wanted to ask you. Has it been brought up since last, I think it was October? Has the back tax been brought up at all from any of your constituents?
Not formally. It's been more anecdotal, where people have complained a bit about not being able to get used to using, you know, bringing your bag, for example, to the mall or to a restaurant. And so there seems to be more of an acceptance for the grocery store. It seems like everybody's used to that. The behavior there is, you know, pretty much set. But there have been some, some concerns and complaints about having to carry, you know, a bag into Montgomery Mall or somewhere else when you're not even thinking about it. So that's been, that has been brought up.
The amount of money that was supposed to be brought in from that got significantly more than we were expecting. When is the council going to take a look at that again?
I don't think it's on our agenda right now, but it's something that I plan to talk with my colleagues to see if it's going to be revisited. Obviously, you know, we go through our budget process. We look at everything, and it would come up in that context, but specifically to see where people are going to be, you know, we'll see. But I would be open to the possibility of making sure that we focus on the grocery stores, et cetera, and maybe try to make an exemption when it comes to things of, you know, shopping centers and things of that nature, which seem to be a little bit more onerous for people.
And then the last time that it was brought up, last fall, they had said, well, this is where we are with it, but we're going to, I guess, modify it a bit. I think they said in the spring. Besides where you would charge and where you wouldn't, were there any other things that you might think about changing it in any way, or was it only where you would collect the back tax from? What other ways might you change the back tax?
I have not, you know, this is not something that I can speak on behalf of the council. We haven't had that conversation. Again, I know that what I have heard and other people have commented is that there seems to be general acceptance in terms of bringing your own bag, et cetera, to shop, you know, grocery stores, but there doesn't seem to be such an acceptance when it comes to shopping centers, you know, and other places, restaurants, et cetera. So I think that that probably would be something that I personally would be open to exploring, but we have not had a formal discussion on other issues related to that.
In terms of complaints that you've received, have you gotten any more complaints on people that, or businesses, I should say, that haven't registered for the tax yet?
I have not received, I mean, my office has not received formal complaints. As I said, this has been more, you know, when I'm out and about in different community meetings, sometimes when I am actually paying for something at a store in the mall, and I hear people complain, and I'm just going to go, yeah, those people, I don't know what they were thinking. Just kidding. But so it's been more about, you know, what I hear out in the community, but my office has not received formal complaints.
Going back to the bus transit, this, leading up to that recent vote, was there any other new information pertaining to the project that they were able to present to the council, or is it still strictly preliminary and we still kind of need to sit on it before we get more detail?
Well, it is preliminary. I mean, obviously, there are a number of steps that need to take place, you know. Number one, I mean, we did have a task force, you know, report. The executive has led the way in the fact that he has forwarded these requests to us to make sure that we can study it a little bit further. There's still a lot of unanswered questions, you know, what will be the priority routes? How would you fund that? If the purpose of something like this is sort of an answer to the fact that these master plans that we are so interested in can move forward, depending on what the funding mechanism looks like, you know, you need to be careful that you're not incentivized, you know, not providing the proper incentive for businesses to move into these places. I know that residents are not going to be, obviously, very excited about having to pay for it. So there are a lot of questions in terms of what would that look like, you know, what would, you know, the element tax district look like? Would there be differentiation? So these are things that we have to work through, but I believe that this is a very important investment in starting some of the planning and the studies, and then, you know, move forward with whatever we believe is the best combination.
Were there any models that they potentially threw out there saying that we could possibly mirror that more in different cities?
You know, there are models that the task force looked at in different cities and even other countries. Obviously, you know, we're a very unique place here in Montgomery County, so even, even though you can take pieces of those best practices, it's not going to be exactly the same. We have to, obviously, I think in my opinion, prioritize those areas that do not have a lot of transit infrastructure. But we also need to look at our ride-on system, you know, and also study that carefully, understand how we can enhance that, and how does that tie in into something like this. So there's still a lot of questions, and I think that these studies will begin to shed light on those so that then the council can come in and then take, you know, make decisions on the finer points of how you would implement this, if at all.
I saw you yesterday at the women's legislative briefing, and we talked, they talked there a lot about what was going on in Congress and in the state legislature regarding women's legislation. Is anything coming up in Montgomery County on the council legislation-wise that specifically tracks women in the same way the proposals that were discussed yesterday affects women?
So, you know, in the past, we have had a number of snapshots. The Washington Aaron Women's Foundation did a really amazing portrait project, what they looked at, data points in the Washington region, and Montgomery County was included in that. Obviously, the Commission for Women also does collect a lot of data and also provides briefings to us, so we know where we are. Our approach has always been, obviously, to look at issues of, you know, poverty and issues of disparities through a lens that prioritizes, obviously, women, especially when you look at single female-headed households and how disproportionately do tend to be affected by poverty and other challenges. So as, you know, we're recovering from this very difficult economic time, last year, I put a proposal for a family and youth enhancement initiative. This year, my hope is to continue to expand that and make sure that we are very mindful in terms of how we're providing and restoring some of these positions and some of these programs. One piece I talked about yesterday was childcare funding, and, you know, the council took the step last year restoring about $500,000 for subsidies, and that really is a, really, you know, step in the right direction. But obviously, we need a lot of help in that area.
What kind of subsidies were they?
This is for childcare, yeah. So, you know, recognizing that the cost of living in the county is so much higher than other jurisdictions, it is critical that we pay attention to this because we don't want concentration of poverty, you know, to be something that then we have to grapple with in other areas.
And then the organization that organized the briefing yesterday, Montgomery County?
Commission for Women.
Commission for Women. Will there be, I know that they've been cut to the bone. Will there be any opportunity to restore some of their funding or?
I hope so. I mean, you know, last year was the council that actually put money back in because what had come to us from the executive was pretty much, I mean, the commission was pretty much decimated, and the council took the lead in restoring funding to make sure that we still would have, you know, a staff person there. We also restored money for the counseling sessions the women receive, et cetera. So it's definitely a priority, and especially as they are focusing on issues of poverty and also immigrant women, you know, this is a very unique service. And so we took the lead on that, and I hope that we can continue to do so if things are looking better.
I remember last year, former president Roger Berlin said that the bike share program was going to be, at least have a start, like at least in some areas, we're going to start that in the spring. Are we still on the same timeline now, where are we with that?
I'll have to check on that. I don't know where we are. I'll have to check on that. I believe we are, but I haven't heard any updates.
You're taking part in Valerie Irvin's SNAP the Silence program?
Yes.
Have you thought about planning your meals out, and is your whole family taking part?
I think I'm just going to take part because I can't monitor what my children will be doing, where my daughters are 20 and 15. And, yeah, I started to think about it. I think I'm going to purchase some ramen noodles and just remember how I used to eat when I was in college. I think that would be helpful. I hope I can do it. I think that's part of this exercise, is to, you know, realize how difficult it is. But I have started to think about how I would manage that.
And can you tell us why you think it's so important to participate?
You know, I think it's always important to have an opportunity to walk in somebody else's shoes. It is, you know, it is, I think, sometimes difficult to portray realities that so many people do face in Montgomery County because, you know, we are a very wealthy county, but we do have pockets of poverty. And I think it is, it is very important to step back and truly understand the challenge that it would be to, you know, live on $5 a day and, you know, eat with that, et cetera. It's just extraordinary. So it is a very, I think, important challenge, and I will be encouraging my daughters to participate. We'll see.
What is it exactly? I'm sorry.
It's called the SNAP Challenge, and Councilmember Irvin is leading the way to basically, and she has enlisted, it's a huge list, I don't have the whole list, Neil, maybe you do, of everybody that has signed up, to basically walk in the shoes of, you know, this young woman who is affected by poverty, who says, you know, I live on $5 a day, that's how much money I have to eat throughout the day. And it is to just, I think, put a magnifying glass on issues of poverty in the county.
In terms of that, one of the, I can never pronounce his name, I'm sorry, Senator, says with a G.
Garagiola.
Yeah, that one. So sorry about that. But he's proposed to raise minimum wage to $10 an hour in 2015. He wants to have the first raise in June, July this year. And then he also wants to raise the percentage for tips from 50% to 70% of what minimum wage is. What's your take on raising minimum wage?
Well, you know, for a county like ours, obviously, that would be welcome news for many of the people who are in the service industry and, you know, who work so hard every day to make ends meet. So, I mean, I think it's a worthwhile consideration, and we should look at it, you know, as, if anything, obviously, there's always going to be the cost issue and what would that mean for businesses, et cetera, and we'll have to take a look at that. But, you know, it is, it is pretty daunting when you think about what it costs to, you know, make it here in Montgomery County and the challenges that brings. So I think it's a worthwhile thing to look at.
And when it comes to raising that, he said he also wanted to try to get that to match what the cost of living is in Maryland. And he said that right now, the cost of living in Maryland is already $10, I think, somewhere around $50 something cents, right? But where he's trying to raise minimum wage to be would be $10 an hour, and that's in 2015. Doesn't really match what even just the cost of living today is, let alone a couple of years from now. Have you heard from any of your residents in regards to especially this topic of doing that kind of a challenge? What is your take on residents in your community living on that?
I pretty much, you know, deal with this on a daily basis. I mean, my district is one that has a disproportionate number of people who are below the median income. If you look at the school system, and you look at the farms rates, you will find that, you know, very high farms rates, especially in the down-county area, but also in the up-county area. And it very much mirrors the focus zone map of the school system. So this is an everyday issue for many families in Montgomery County, and anything that we can do to, A, I think, promote economic development, because that's what everybody really wants. People just want a good-paying job, and hopefully, one that they don't have to commute to too far away. You know, B, people also want to know that if they ever need assistance, such as after-school activities or childcare, et cetera, that there can be some support there. You know, and C, that, yeah, that leaders are aware of these issues of poverty, because like I said before, it seems to me that there are many instances where people don't seem to understand or even imagine that Montgomery County can have those. So I see it every day. You know, I drive through these communities every single day, and we work very hard at reaching out to, you know, many of the people in the community that are affected by this and try to understand how we can best serve them.
Do you think that maybe you and the rest of the county council would, in some way, try to support this, Senator, in this fight to raise minimum wage?
Well, you know, we'll have state ledge at 12:30. The process that we have is that usually bills come to us, and then the council has an opportunity to hear it out, you know, and then take a position, either supportive, no position, or in opposition. So I'm sure that that will come up, come to us.
So then you guys are just waiting for that?
I know today that that committee is getting their quarterly status report on economic development. Are you going to be in that meeting? And if not, as council president, what's kind of your take on that with regard to economic development?
I don't think I'm going to be in that meeting. I have this huge, huge schedule today, including two GO meetings this afternoon. Where we are in economic development, I think that we are poised to continue to strengthen our economic development strategy. I think that when you look at the creation of the Economic Development Corporation, when you look also at the master plans that we have adopted and the ones that we plan to receive and hopefully adopt very soon, it shows a very complete, I think, picture of where we are going. Obviously, it's always about improving, and it's always about continuing to look at ways. And one of them is obviously this issue of the development process and how cumbersome it is and how we can streamline that. That's really important. And also workforce development. You know, what are we doing to be proactive to ensure that all the way from pre-K to 16, and then in partnership with our private sector, how are we preparing the workforce for today and the future? These are all very important pieces. So, you know, I'm an optimist, but I also am somebody that looks at continuous improvement as a goal that you're constantly trying to achieve. And so I think we're poised, we're in the right, right track.
And then the last regional report showed up kind of below some of our neighbors in terms of economic growth. Are we catching up? Do you know what we're going to find out today?
I think what I will say is that, you know, Montgomery County has extraordinary assets that other jurisdictions do not have, and so it depends on how we are doing this analysis of, you know, where are we vis-à-vis other jurisdictions. You know, obviously, there are some indicators that show, for example, vacancy rate for our commercial properties tend to be pretty high and higher than other jurisdictions. And so these are things that we know, and so we need to strategically target. At the same time, you know, we have other aspects that make us, I think, very attractive. For example, the agricultural reserve. There are people that really appreciate the fact that we have that reserve. For example, our extraordinary school system, the diversity of socioeconomic levels and workforce that's available. So all those elements, I think, are really important, and they're ingredients for us to continue to push, to be in the lead.
Sorry to go back to it. I still have more questions about, you know, where we are with minimum wage and everything. You said you're doing this as a challenge thing, you're buying ramen noodles to do. Do you think that if somebody really can live in this county on minimum wage alone?
I don't know. I think that's why this challenge is interesting, because I think it gives us an opportunity to experience that and move forward. Do, you know, do I think that people can live on minimum wage alone? Probably not. I think that it's important to remember that, you know, people tend to want to help each other. There are a lot of people that have to, you know, partner, be together. That's why we have this issue of shared housing. I mean, there are some, you know, challenges out there that we cannot pretend don't exist, but I'm assuming that it's probably a very difficult thing to do.
As you're going to be exploring this challenge and everything, besides buying just ramen noodles to eat on, how do you plan on living on $5 a day for this challenge?
I will let you know once I'm done. I'll let you know how it went. Peanut butter and jelly, I mean, I don't know. We'll see.
And that's just like, that's just food, though. Are you just, are you just budgeting for just food, or are you talking about?
Yeah, yeah. I'm focusing on just, you know, what do you, how much money do you have to eat every day? And that's what the $5 a day challenge focuses on.
So just food?
Yeah.
How hard do you think it would be to go off of $5 and still trying to get to work? Like, as in, if you were to look at the big picture with just, not just eating on that little, do you think that you would be able to go a week with just living on minimum wage personally?
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, it's hypothetical that I can answer.
Yeah, it's just a hypothetical. I'm just curious. I mean, you live in Montgomery County, right?
Yeah. But I mean, I'm sure that we could find some people that you could interview that, you know, that have minimum wage, and then you should go do a story on that. That would be very interesting. You know, I can't tell you what it would be, you know, how it would be to live in minimum wage, because I don't make minimum wage, but I think that it would be interesting to interview some people.
Cool. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you so much.